Good evening. Welcome to the last regular meeting of the Town of Cicero Planning Board for 2018. We appreciate everyone attending. Couple of housekeeping announcements first. Note the location of the emergency exits. There's one in the front of the room to your left and one in the rear of the room should they be needed. And if for any reason you can't hear the proceedings, please feel free to bring it to our attention. We would like everyone to be able to hear and we'll try to adjust the audio system accordingly. And if you have a cellphone with you, please shut the ringer off, silence your ringer, and if you need to take or make a phone call, please feel free to use the conference room or the back hall. It's getting cold outside, but you can also do that. And with that, would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Marzullo?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, just, and for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the December tenth, two thousand eighteen meeting. Has everyone received a copy? Changes or deletions? Hearing done, do we have a motion?
No.
Motion by Mr. Carr, second by Mr. Abbey to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those ohs say nay. All those who wish to abstain. Hearing no abstentions or negative votes, please mark the resolution for accepting the minutes as presented. Moving on to public input, the board will accept comment on any active application currently before the planning board. Comments must be directed to the board. If comments are relative to an application with a scheduled public hearing, please hold those comments until the public hearing. Thank you. Speakers must speak from the podium, provide their name and address to the clerk, be recognized by the chair, and speak into the microphone. Comments are held to three to five minutes per speaker. Comments requiring a longer period of time should be submitted to the board in writing for the board's consideration and placement in the application file. Would anyone like to address the board on an application that is not subject to a public hearing? We don't have any of those today. Hearing no one and seeing no one approach, we'll close the public input section at six Moving into the agenda, the first item is major subdivision preliminary plan, Lions Run, Cicero Center Road, tax map number zero eight zero point one dash one four dash zero one point zero, seventy-three lots. Tim Coier from I News Inc. will be presenting for the applicant.
Good evening. We're back with the Lions Run preliminary plan. Right now, we're showing the seventy-two, seventy-three lots. Actually, we cut it down to seventy-two lots. We actually combined a parcel up here for one of Mark's comments. We got Mark's comments last week. The engineer hasn't been able to address all the comments yet. I was able to address some of them that pertain to my plan, but overall, we haven't resubmitted a new plan addressing all of Mark's comments this time.
Do you have the density drawn? Did you bring that?
Yep. This is the sketch that we asked of us to show the adjacent parcels to the east and to the south of our -- this is the existing preliminary plan that we're trying to get approved. These are the parcels to the south and the east. Right now, I believe we're showing like two hundred lots on there. That's not realistic. Per the septic and sewer capacity, we're only allowed another -- I have it here. Actually, Mark has it here on his notes. Only additional hundred lots for this adjacent property. This was done just specifically for density purposes only. It's not a realistic sketch according to the sewer capacity, so I could adjust it accordingly. But at the time, it was just for to see how many lots we could fit on there.
Can you please adjust it because for secret?
Yep.
Where required? If there's, if we believe that there's going to be additional development, we're supposed to take that into consideration. Am I correct on that, Neil?
That's correct.
And so, we need to update it to show what would possibly be used in the future so that we can address it accordingly. I think Mark's comments indicated -- Mark, did you indicate that there were two hundred and twenty total lots or something like that?
Yes.
Two hundred and twenty-three lots.
And the sewer capacity for the line? That's not capacity of the plant, correct? That's the capacity of the main.
That's correct.
We actually, the other night, we attended, Judy was there also, Mrs. Boyke, our councilwoman, was there. Actually, the town of Cicero got called out by the county executive as almost the only municipality, am I correct, Judy? In the county, who, Don was there also, who has actually done something about the sewers and the capacities, and he gave kudos to the town of Cicero, suggested other communities follow our lead. The Brewerton Station is actually in pretty good shape on capacity. This board's done a great job of watching sewer capacities.
I want to also point out that, Mark has also pointed out that you're going to need multiple pumping stations to, if in the future anybody decides to do any of this, multiple pumping stations will be required to get the sewer up, sewer job. At the time, right now, neither parcel is zoned properly for doing residential development. You'd have to go through zone change and then through the coingplant process before that even starts to happen. My client has no interest at the moment of doing anything with those adjacent properties. And again, this map was just done for density purposes.
I understand that, but you have stub roads leading into the new sections. That would be an indication that you intend to build more houses, and this property is challenging.
Yep.
So, the planning board would really be remiss if we didn't look at the project in its entirety.
And just so, I don't believe our client would have a problem with getting rid of stub streets, but I believe it's good planning to show them, and I believe that the board wants to.
It's a little hard to be objective and say that we did full secret disclosure when we said, well, there's no intention to do the adjacent lots, and yet, in the development, you've included stub streets.
Correct.
It's like saying one thing and doing another. And I don't think the board -- Neil?
At this point, it's well within your purview to consider for secret because you've seen them, or they were there, and they should just magically disappear. It doesn't like disappear from your memory, and it doesn't disappear from your obligation under secret. And just bringing a razor across it doesn't change the fact that there were stub streets.
How was you bringing it up, Neil?
Okay. There's also some significant, actually, probably, Mark, you want to go down through some of your comments, and so, we can discuss them. This is a complicated project. Stormwater is not, is a challenge also in this area.
Yeah, I mean, I think they've addressed most of the issues. I mean, there's still some finer issues that need to be addressed relative to stormwater in their detail, and really, could be addressed during development, the contract drawings, and not necessarily during preliminary plan. But what is important to understand is to get to this point, you know, they had to modify their road profile and grade plans such that they're bringing in a fairly significant amount of fill to raise the roads and lots up so that they can drain properly. So, you know, you're going to be bringing a lot of fill onto this property in order to have it be developed, so it can be developed and then have the adequate drainage.
Bringing up the amount of fill being brought in, did Steve Snell mention that he, has he gone out and looked at the section currently being built?
Uh, no. We have not been out to look at that, and no one's contacted our office relative to anything going on with that.
Okay, Steve? Has it been concerns raised, and they seem that there's an awful lot of fill going on in the current section? And are we in compliance with the fill, the grading heights and the fill? You know, as to whether they had fill permitted or what's required by the site plan? I had spoken with the supervisor, but my suggestion was, as his was, is that Steve Snell, the town engineer, go out with you and take a look and make sure that things are being done appropriately. Because in the previous section, we had issues with this developer easements being in wrong locations, roads not being constructed according to current code, and so, it would bear looking into. I know one of the council people have already brought it to my attention, and I have brought it to my attention, and we should have somebody out there looking at the stormwater plans and making sure we're in compliance.
Okay.
Especially since we're, I'm sure, so, I'm bringing it to your attention now.
Okay.
So, yeah, I just mean, so that's the issues that are, again, stormwater, you know, they're able to get it, so it's easy to work, so again, there's a, you know, an amplification for that, and that's the fact that they need to bring in a lot of fill in order to make this, make this work properly.
There is also the additional concern about pumping stations. Pumping stations are a burden on the overall town's sewer budget. There is no way for us to accommodate getting all of this in one pump station. It's going to have to be two.
Well, you say all of this, if you mean the all of that, they showed on the, the way they're currently proposing it, won't accommodate that. I don't know if you would be able to accommodate it with a different plan by locating, but you'd have to locate the pump station somewhere off-site perhaps. This depends on the topography and how the rest of the, the rest of the site lays out. I mean, if there was a continuous slope to some low point somewhere within that area, then you might be able to situate a single pump station in that area to serve everything. As it is, it basically serves what is, what is shown here, you know, and so, you've probably got, some of the lots are served by gravity sewer off the existing sections, particularly these up here, and maybe a few in here are served by gravity sewers, so those don't need pump stations. But you probably have the remaining, I think it's seventy-six lots total, or seventy?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three.
Actually, seventy-two lots.
So, you probably have somewhere in the range of fifty to sixty lots that are tributary to this pump station, and then, again, when that other area develops, you will need at least one more pump station to serve those lots. So, you have a relatively small number of lots being developed that, you know, are, if I was taking on, you know, pretty good, pretty good, you know, future responsibility for the operation maintenance of that pump station for a relatively small number of lots.
I've heard that you can do pumping by the house, the house itself, and we can avoid a pump station in each of the homes. Is that?
If you were to do what they call a pressure sewer system, yes.
Yes.
That has a small, what they call basically a grinder pump would be installed in each, each property, each house would have its own small pump that would pump to a pressure sewer system, and then that would discharge to the gravity sewer system. So, there, those are private facilities, so the homeowner would be really absolutely responsible for the cost of the pump and the operation maintenance of that pump.
Because it does concern me, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I know the cost of the sewer pumping stations is, it's a burden on the town. And I've heard both presenter and our engineer say that we're going to need at least two. That at least means we could need three, which means then the town board's going to be taking on three, two, maybe three pump stations, to Mark's point, to service a small number of lots. So...
Is it special districted, so that these lots pay for it?
This is with, well, no, because the way that the, it is within a sewer district, and the cost for the sewer district, really, the operation maintenance of the sewer district are spread throughout everybody within the district.
So, the existing property owners would potentially be on the hook for a big increase for us putting in these lots?
Well, I won't say big increase, but again, it just continues to add to the operation maintenance cost of the overall sewer district.
I'm not sure, but I think, I don't know what the cost is of upgrading one of these pump stations, but every few years, Nick Caposo from WEP tells me that they have to go in and replace pumps, and they've upgraded the specs for the initial station, but WEP is not excited about more pump stations, and he said the cost of refurbishing them is only going higher and higher.
Yeah, no, that's true. The requirements get, get to be more and more, and, you know, they, generally, like they have generators on these now, so when you lose power, you don't need to bring in separate pumps and...
Mrs. Boyke's here from the town board. Can I recognize, I'll recognize you because this discussion's going to impact your budgets.
Exactly. As a reference, they have upgraded three or four of the pump stations in Brewerton. Easy enough to find out what the cost is per station, because the one on, must grant may be drawn for me, was accessible. So, I mean, it's very costly.
I don't know how the board feels, but I'd like to see the applicant, see if we can come up with a better way of how we're going to handle the sewer.
Okay.
That's not going to be as big a burden on the town.
Okay.
As part of the seeker, and also specifically, if the only thing that we come up with is maybe we're going to have to put pump stations, I'm not saying they have to build it, but I want a sewer plan for the full buildup, so that we have a good idea. Does that, Neil, does that seem reasonable?
It's a reasonable question.
Okay.
At least we're going to know for sure what we're talking about if we approve it. So, we'll know for sure what's going to be required, or maybe there's some other opportunities. But I think it's up to the applicant to do the engineering and see if we can't come up with a better solution.
Yeah, we'll have to do some, you know, elevations, get some information on these adjacent properties to come up with some of these answers for you.
I mean, how's the rest of the board feel about that?
Question, the alternative, you know, those grinding stations for individual homes, is that something that people have now? I don't know.
I, that was an inquiry to another municipality, and that would, that's a possibility to avoid pumping stations.
I technically have them at my house.
I was just going to say, I sold several properties, particularly in the Swigler County, where grinder pumps are part of the property due to the drainage. And there is a maintenance required, I do believe, up here, is there none?
Yes, yes. My personal house has a grinder pump, and I have maintenance that I have to keep it up, so.
Well, if it's a burden with the way this lays out and the way this land is, the burden should not be transferred to the other people in the sewer district or to the town overall. At the very, it should be neutral.
Got you. Okay.
So, I think we've covered sewers. Do you have any?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay. Stormwater? Do you think we have the best, you're happy with the?
Um, yeah, yeah, we have some minor comments and things that would need to be worked out in detail, et cetera, but I mean, they're providing, I think they're now two stormwater management areas.
Yes.
Correct. Basically, one over here that serves the area on the north side of wetlands, and then another larger, very large one over in here that will serve the remaining area, some of the contraventions.
Will that area down in the lower corner that you were just referring to, will that cover any portion of the additional hundred or?
No.
Two hundred lots?
No, they would only take care of this development also.
Do we have the grading on the additional lots?
I think...
Current, existing grades?
Yeah, I mean, generally, I can tell you that it, so this is the south side of this proposed development. It generally follows down around through the power lines in here, and I think then starts maybe the line straight back up to the truth here.
I believe you can.
If the general range.
Can we get some grading?
Yep.
Lines on the increased density section, because it would seem that the only way we can talk about this and know what we're talking about is to have some of that information?
To do the sewer detail that you asked before, we're going to have to get grades out there no matter what, so yes, we will.
Okay, well, would you show those and share them on the plan, please?
I mean, it's very wide and flat through there. I mean, when it, when there's a good storm and spring runoff and those types of things, it just spreads throughout the field, so it won't matter.
Okay. Neil, do you have any second before I start pulling?
Uh, no.
Guess maybe just one or a couple other items. Traffic studies, I think we, or traffic, I think we've asked, you know, they asked on a traffic study, we submitted that, I guess we need, I'd ask the, some kind of feedback from the county and state DOT.
Actually, to handle that, that's a good point. I think when we get the rest of the information in, and when you have your sewer plans in and your grading and stuff like that, and the additional feature, I may actually schedule a coordinated review, and I'll have WEP and New York State DOT come up, and we'll sit and discuss the plan. We've done that once before, but there's been some significant changes, and I would like to hear their input, plus the county DOT. So, Mark, I think that would probably, your point's well taken, and I think the best way to do it is get everybody in a room that has a stake in this project and discuss it.
The last argument to consider is wetlands. They do have two major areas, major areas of wetlands. The first being the one down in through here, and then the other down in here. This would be the DEC wetland, and there is a buffer area associated with that DEC wetland, but any improvements that they're doing are currently without, outside the limits of that buffer. So, they're not impacting the DEC wetlands or the buffer. But the core wetlands, you know, what they're showing is a few of the wetlands they would be filling, which are here, here for the road, over here for the road, and then these wetlands here and here will remain and be in the rear of the lots that front on these roads. And then there's two areas where they're showing additional wetlands would be created or mitigation areas here and here. Since they're filling these, they're showing additional mitigation. I don't know, we haven't provided any information from the core as to whether those would be sufficient for the mitigation, or whether there might be more mitigation. The other things that you might want to find out from the core, again, is what restrictions they might put on those areas, conservation easements, which they are showing conservation easements associated with those, but again, I don't know if any, if the applicant has approached the core to, one, confirm the delineations that are shown are correct, and two, begin to get some feedback on the mitigation plan and whether it would be something that could be accepted.
Engineers have contacted core, and they're waiting on comments from them, so I asked them that question before we resubmitted this last time. And at that time, they didn't have anything from core, I will ask them again.
And can you forward that information?
Oh, absolutely.
I'm sure there was an application filled out for the core?
Yes.
Can you also provide us with a copy of that?
Good.
Then I will, I'll invite the core to attend a coordinated review with everyone else.
Yeah, I think we'd rather get that information so we can understand what kinds of limitations are, might be on the areas, and how it cores the units.
Hundred percent agree with you. Board? Steve, anything at this point from Coates?
No.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes, sir.
Neil?
Nothing.
Mark, anything additional?
Uh, no, I think those are...
Good job. This is a difficult piece of property.
Very difficult.
It bears us having a close look at it. Mr. Resino?
Most, thank you.
Mr. Abbey?
Also, Nelson.
Mr. Marzullo?
Also.
Mr. Carr? So am I. I know you've got quite a long list.
Yes, sir.
But I think, so when I'm still here, we're going to coordinate, we're going to do a coordinated review, and we're going to get all the parties in and try to settle it so that we don't keep going back and forth. Just let's get it done.
I agree. Thank you very much.
One way or another. Next item on the agenda is site plan, five-star equipment, East Caff Road, tax map number zero five seven point dash zero one dash zero two point two, Cicero, and East Caff Road, tax map number zero one eight three dash zero six dash zero two point two, North Syracuse proposed equipment facility. And Mr. Thrasher from CCHA will be representing. First question is, Neil, have we obtained North Syracuse, the village's agreement that will handle this?
They were, they were notified, as far as we have, we have no...
Should, okay, that's all we have to do? Okay, because it is entirely within Cicero. Yes, sir.
Good evening. James Thrasher, while Mark is... And Mark is uploading the drawings. We received comments from Mark's office relating to stormwater and some other comments. We addressed those and planned that were resubmitted, and then we received his final comments today as it relates to this. So, as we discussed previously, we're here for the construction of new five-star equipment dealership off of Caff Road in the rear of the parcel on Route eighty-one. Parking in front for employees and customers, the two access points, the northern access point working to the loading docks and the rear service bays, and then in front working around the circulation with a display area over eighty-one. Stormwater, WEP has been submitted and addressed, and all those comments have been taken care of. We show a couple signs within the package as well, one being fifty feet, one being twenty-five feet. So, we still provide access to the north via the gravel road. We straightened that out. I know there was a couple comments on easements to adjacent property that as the current access drag comes up through our property and curls back in. With me is Tim from Five Star. He was working on either locating or taking care of those. So, if we, if they're not currently in place, we will provide the necessary easements and file them with the town so that they are there for cross-access between our parcel and the neighbor.
While you're on that subject, the last time you were here, you mentioned that there might be a change, that one of your neighbors wanted to expand.
Correct. So, our neighbor was looking, and in our design there, we left appropriate space that our neighbor could potentially purchase. Is there a contract to purchase at this time or no?
There's not. We've not been able to come to an agreement.
So, there would not be a?
Subdivision.
A subdivision coming down in the near future?
Correct. Not at this time. If something comes forward, we will come back, or they will come back looking just to cut off that portion adjacent to the parking lot. So, everything works from a truck turning radius for the trucks that are going in there. We have a little E1 grinder system where we take our sewage pump directly up to the sewer main, the pump station of Timlock. So, we have that to operate. There used to be a sewer outback that was abandoned, so we're coming down through easement and taking, connecting it to the sewer district. Colors are, you know, only yellow you get is on the signs. We have the elevations as part of the package, but nothing crazy, everything we talk... Colors are, you know, only yellow you get is on the signs, we have the elevations as part of the package, but nothing crazy, everything we talked about before in terms of the colors. A little, so I think everything's good.
Can we, as long before we leave the site plan, start looking at elevations, can we go down through the engineering comments?
Yep.
And can you, one of you can read them and then we can discuss how they were addressed.
Yeah, maybe, maybe if I could just.
Absolutely.
Yeah, maybe, I think really, again, they addressed pretty much all of our comments in our letter, but I think the area we might wanna take a look at or we did have some comments on this, the, James did mention, this is the property line for the site. As I think everybody's aware now because we've done the Enterprise car and the gas station, Circle K is now. This site gets access to Path Road via an access, ingress, ingress easement that runs along this access drive on the airport business park. To give everybody's aware of that. So this is the property line for this site, but you can see that the access drive and not quite the parking spaces, but pretty close, but this access drive here for the main business, the airport business park encroaches onto their property. So what we've recommended is that an easement be granted from the five star equipment site to the airport business park to continue that access through there.
Neil?
Uh, yeah, that could be, you're agreeing to that.
We're agreeable to that, yes.
I think we're agreeable, that we discussed it.
Yeah, we need that, well, okay.
It would be a condition.
And the other comment that we had relative to the access was, we recommended, and I looked at this maybe, I think maybe it had a stop bar too, but add a stop sign and a stop bar in both of these, it would be the exits for the vehicles exiting here. Particularly here, maybe a little bit of striking or something to better define this because this is kinda wide open here, but something into control of the traffic exiting from the five star site, you know, onto this access drive.
Perfectly fine for you to put a center line there so people see where they're driving and then a stop bar and a stop sign.
Yeah, the center, the. Yeah, so for your site, that might be what you need because they do have a center line for the existing access drive here, you have two lanes. So yeah, if something could better define this, we had stop bars, stop sign on both of these, I think would help control the traffic exiting onto that access drive.
And those were comments that we received today from Mark and we had a conversation with Five Star and Tim's here, we're acceptable with both of those.
Yeah, those are really the only outstanding issues, I think, I mean, the rest of the items, again, if you look at the elevation sign, you can set there, but we don't have any comments on there or the lighting that you gave us.
Do we have the elevations on this desk?
Yeah.
Should be. That I know of here.
Okay.
So in the rear, you have the service bay doors, the lower ones, you can see the service bay doors and then the loading dock doors, one being a dock door and one being an entry door. The upper elevation for the American flag and then other flags, your front entrance with just the five star equipment sign, main entrance. Off the lot, you have a little bit of conference space in there for training. And then rear, we proposed other signage and printing up, printing up the rear of the building as, you know, everyone coming up and down. Maybe one will see the back of the building, so we're really trying to give it two faces within this. So with a little additional cost, but we thought it was beneficial for the, you know, service that they wanna show to their customers, the quality they bring. Those are the elevations, then we.
Are the colors correct?
They're correct, as close as you can get from the architect to, you know, purchasing it, but yes, in our platter, so, you know, so yes, in, you know, the gray cones and the yellow. So you requested previously, you know, not a lot of bright colors, we just needed a little, yeah, near.
Even I can see orange, Jeff.
Yeah, yellowish orange.
What's the building gonna be clad?
The building materials, I think is a combination of beets and some metal trims and then around the doors, we have some metal paneling that is where the five star is and.
I don't see anything wrong with it, I'm just asking, what it is.
Yeah, it is an unusual.
So that's what the outside will be is, like the stucco or whatever they call it.
Yeah, and then so, access treatments around the entrance point, so it really gives a kicker, you know.
From the back of the building to eighty-one is about how far?
Back, can we go back to the site plan? Like I mentioned down there, it's a hundred and eighty-five feet.
But is that to the?
That's to the property line.
To the property line?
So that's the edge of DOT, so to the edge of the road, couple hundred feet, two hundred and twenty-five feet to the edge of eighty-one.
And what's the vegetation there?
You got, well, it's gonna be, you got vegetation on the other side of the fence where you got some trees and, you know, scrub, work and clean our stuff up, what we can clean and construct our stormwater management in that area. Our site is being raised slightly to sort of just be below visibility.
So we'll be able to see it from eighty-one.
Oh, yeah, that was the key component to the, looking at purchasing the site.
Mr. Resedo, anything on elevations?
Also, thanks.
Mark?
Also, thank you.
Mr. Carter?
The pylon sign can be fifty feet to you?
Yes.
Does?
Yeah, 'cause of our proximity to eighty-one, so.
Or could you put up the sign package, please?
The last time you were here, you talked about being creative with your equipment testing area, were you addressing that tonight?
Yeah, it's been taken care of and our stormwater, so it's taken care of, it's, we have a small area in the back portion of the site, so part of the plan. So those are the two signs, fifty and twenty-five, twenty-five is in the front, fifty.
Twenty-five is no problem, but I didn't know about the fifty.
Well, they're both within a thousand feet, so they both can exceed, tax might is twenty-four feet further away, so they're both, they're both compliant, both in compliance.
So that's, that's our little play area.
Yeah, so this is the equipment testing area here, I mean, I don't have any issue with that, assuming that they're able to limit their disturbed area to that. I mean, the rest of it, kind of sheath blow.
Well, when he said they had to be a little creative, I said, you're the, you're the one who would know whether it was.
And the way it's represented is a pile of sand, sand and gravel. That they're going to use to move around, it doesn't really talk about much about per disturbance and those types of things, so. Assuming it's limited to that area, contained within that area, it shouldn't be an issue.
For the most part, people are buying this equipment and utilizing it before, so if they're ready, they got, you know, a gen or whatever, you know, they're literally calling in and having it delivered, so this is for limited folks where they might wanna step up inside and just test it out, so it doesn't.
We'll have to go over there and play.
Yeah, there you are, we're gonna have a.
You might not buy it.
You gotta, you gotta buy it.
Probably not.
We're an adventurous bunch.
We don't have those Cadillac, you know, get a hundred dollar gift card and we test drive something here itself. We could get a hundred dollar gift card and buy one of them, maybe a thousand.
You're not gonna let us come over and try it, are you? Absolutely, you can come over. We have an open house and we'll let the whole community come over.
You mentioned, you mentioned a grinder and a sewer and all this other stuff, but you got water separators on there, what is, what's the purpose of these fifteen hundred gallon water separator tanks?
Uh, 'cause we have, with the equipment here, oils and that type of stuff, they come off the equipment when they're in the lot or being worked on, so we just can't, we wanna separate the oils from the stormwater before they're discharged, so we have oil water separators for that purpose.
And is that something that you?
I don't believe those are tripteric stormwater systems, that's a sanitary system.
Yeah, sanitary, I apologize, yeah.
So that's something that you just get in your?
Uh, really, no, that really comes down to the county with plumbing. Because they'll think you pull a plumbing permit to do this work and that's really the purview of the county and the map, map release site.
Speaking of plumbing, we're showing two hundred and fifty gallons a day water usage. And with bringing the equipment in and having to wash the, how did we solve that issue, I know it was an issue, bringing the equipment in and then washing the mud and the stones off and stuff. What was the solution to that?
There is an actual, what the last, inside is a wash bay. And in that wash bay, there's catch, basically catching solid material before it goes into the oil water separator system, so.
Okay.
Yep.
So it was a dry.
Yeah, and it will all be interior washing and will be captured, so it's nothing outside.
What were the hours of operation, the days and hours of operation?
Seven thirty in the morning till five, Monday through Friday.
No weekend hours, no? Well, it's over by eighty-one, I don't think it would have affected anybody in there.
And how many employees?
Uh, twenties, the projected.
Projected, how many employees? So we've covered signs, we've looked at the elevation, stormwater, access, what are we missing, Neil?
Landscape.
Landscape, huh?
Landscape, yeah, landscape, we don't want landscaping here.
We're gonna back up down with that equipment.
So we have an extended attention area, fire retention, so we have the appropriate plantings along that rear area. We take the grates across and goes in there to have the view up front. We have different types of trees and shrubs that are noted up in the upper right-hand corner, which are going to be our index that would be appropriate for this area and the type of uses on site, so we tried to make it an appealing entrance into the site.
What's on the north end where it goes up to the residences, is there any plan there? So you've got some trees planned, planned for out along the front entrance, how big are those? If you have the seed size.
And they're planted, you have mature size, twenty feet tall, forty feet tall, fifty feet tall, or they're planted, they are, you know, seventy-eight feet tall, you know, on the, this version.
You really want trees twenty foot tall out in front of your building? Or would we rather have them against where the residences are, let them grow up and shield? It doesn't seem, one doesn't seem to go with the other, I'm not a big fan of after we had to redo all these plaza of planting a tree that's seven foot tall, we know is gonna be twenty-five in front of your building, you're spending a fortune on signs. I think the trees that you have out front, they're gonna get that tall, would be better served to be placed at the northern end to help screen more trees.
We tried to keep away any disturbance from the north side, but if you want us to come and plant trees on the north side of the playground?
There you have it. Yeah, that's what I sort of angling at, you can take them from the front, as far as I'm concerned, I don't know why we wanna plant twenty foot trees in front of a building and we just put a huge sign up, which is appropriate, you know, and the trees would be better served if they were between the residences and the project. Just let them grow, hopefully they get thirty feet tall. I mean, how does the board feel about that?
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah, especially with the plaza and eighty-one, they took all the trees down and so you couldn't see it anymore.
Yeah, you can see it.
You're believing there's also mature head roll there now.
Yeah, there is mature head.
Mature head roll times between residential area and that lot.
Yeah, like ran along.
But what we can supplement.
Can you put that on the plan too, what's there currently, so we have some idea, but you don't need trees. Nice low shrubs are great for, but you don't need trees out in front of your building, you're gonna be building a beautiful building, is it gonna get twenty-five feet tall? You're not gonna see the building anymore or the signs, and they would be better served to be out back. Don't want less trees, just maybe move them to where they work. I know James loves that.
I even move them.
But also for a buffer on the north and the south, you have the six foot stockade fence, the eighty-one facing west there, is it you can just leave the existing state fence there?
Whatever, the police have no ability to see through it, we normally put a stockade fence, I mean, put a chain link on this type of an operation. So can you clarify that, so when we come back with this, we have that with the other stuff and all that? I think the applicant.
We're more than happy with chain link fence, that's not a problem.
Well, I mean, what did you want, that's a lot of.
The only thing we wanna do is provide security for the equipment, so the people in there may like.
And I thought in our previous conversation, it was a, this is a screening from the neighbors as well. We're not trying to keep security, but we can do whatever you would like to say.
Can you come up with exactly what type of fence would best serve the purpose and help with crime prevention and maybe you wanna put some stockade fence on the north side against the residences, but can we get that to the best, to the best that serves all the purposes? We also don't want the police over there all the time having stuff stolen off these. And your southern neighbor's Enterprise car and all, they're gonna have is seven hundred and fifty cars sitting in a lot, so I don't think your equipment's gonna offend Enterprise. Okay, so could we just define where you wanna put chain length, where you might wanna put?
And there won't be any slats in the chain link, we all know.
Oh, we all know.
And this sort of an application that the chief would actually prefer that we have where they can see the equipment as they drive by, 'cause I assume you're gonna lock the RDoS. And they have floodlights on the police cars, so if they're looking through, then they need to be able to see, so, for the security of the site.
These things, I can be part of a conditional approval, 'cause in order for Five Star to close, and they're hoping to close this year, they need an approval. And then I would just say the stuff that we're talking about in terms of stockade, the chain link fence, providing a landscape buffer along that edge, if everything else is acceptable.
Okay, so let's try, what do we have, what issues do we have outstanding, you need easements.
You got three issues that I heard so far, one you have, one you have the easements, which we could figure out. But then you have the landscaping issue where, well, there's trees and they're gonna be here and they're gonna be there, you don't really have anything firm on that that you could go back to and point and say, that's what you agreed to do. You have just kind of this amorphous thing, you haven't seen it, so you, you wouldn't have a way to know that, what you're proving as far as the landscaping thing, that's, that'd be a difficulty. And then you're talking about screening, or now you're talking about the fence in addition to that and screening to the, I guess, the rear of the property for the residential area. You haven't seen any.
I think we can probably make, I mean, the fence is already in place, I think we could condition it and say the fence to the north side will remain stockade against the residents and the remainder of the fence will be chain link.
So you're gonna say the rear of the property will screen with a number of trees and landscaping to protect the just adjacent residential development? That'd be the first thing, and then the stockade fence will be, that will be switched to a chain link.
Chain link on the east, west and southern boundaries and the northern boundary where it's against the residential area will be stockade. Final, stockade fence, that's all we put up now.
That stockade fence, will it include the right-hand turn that gets to the front of the property?
Are you talking the section of access drive from the, where it?
In front of the playground?
We kind, you know, that rear area around the playground is the only area where I would say, you know, the stockade fence works, so.
It seems like the stockade markup here where we have it, we do, we.
I, no, it's on there.
Okay.
So the stockade fence is gonna be switched to chain link, all areas except the screen, so starting somewhere near residential.
And going up around out right, you don't even have to go all the way to the, to me, it's, our point is, is we wanna protect the residences, so we'll say stockade on. on the north side to make Neil's life easy?
No, stock, it's stockade, here's, here's the way I know for it, you can tell me if I don't know. Stockade fence will be switched to chain link in all areas except the areas screening the adjacent residential properties.
Okay. Tim, you, the applicant agrees that the goal of the stockade fence, I mean, we're saving you a bunch of money there, plus increasing security dramatically.
Exactly, no, we're very happy with that.
So we would appreciate, you know, it's unreasonable.
I would just like to clarify, it includes the front portion here?
Okay.
Yeah, it's fine.
Right here now.
You would like that corner right there.
Stockade as well.
Okay.
Is that, is that screening for the residential?
Yeah, they can look at it right there. So it would work as screening for the residential.
Oh, go from the dark, right where the dark gray starts up and hold on.
Yeah?
Yeah.
And then over to an appropriate length. The stockade fence will be vinyl. Thank you.
The stockade fence is vinyl, or you can put it in there?
Does it cause a color? It's already decided, so it's not. All of them switching out.
They're not major changes? The easements, we can handle with the condition that the easements be?
Yeah, they'll, they'll.
Before we issue a building permit? Steve, would you be okay with that? That the easements are filed and you will get?
Sure, if it is approved before we should.
Right. Is the applicant okay with that?
Yes.
Stipulation?
And for Bob suggesting the vegetation across the front of the building be low growing?
I'll pull this up over to the rear.
You're gonna keep the number of trees the same, you're just gonna move the trees that were in front of the building to the rear? Neil doesn't, I don't think, has good condition on that, I think that's a rather insignificant change, but, so we're gonna still be looking for the same number of trees, don't short us a tree, just relocate, you know? You can put more.
Cut down on the fencing, increase the shrubs and trees.
The fence also helps from, you know, get it out of the backyard and watch the USO, so they, you know, they don't jump to the trees and, uh, activate or something. We'll keep the fence there, and we'll see, we'll make it so it becomes a visual buffer, so if they add a couple trees, we'll do that as well.
Do we have a seeker motion? May I compose our standard seeker? Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Marzullo. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All those who wish to abstain. Hearing no abstentions or negative votes, will you please mark the seeker motion as passing unanimously? Neil, would you please construct a resolution approving the subdivision, approving the site plan as presented with the conditions discussed?
Yes, we're gonna move the adoption of the resolution approving the application on its Five Star equipment, East Taff Road, tax grant number fifty-seven-one-two-point-two, Sisroon, East Taff Road, tax grant number eighteen-six-two-point-two, North Syracuse, is approved with strictest condition under following, one, the color schemes and renderings and elevations presented by the applicant to the planning board, in regard to this application shall be incorporated by reference to the site plan and the board's approval thereof. Accordingly, the actual project must substantially conform to the averages presented near end. Two, the applicant's segment indicates a projected increase in the average water flow, two-hundred-and-fifty gallons per day. The planning board recognizes the need to mitigate and/or offset the increase stress of sanitary service system, and according to the town's policy regarding the offset and or mitigation process, payment is four dollars per gallon, or in this case, one thousand dollars to be paid to the town, so payments shall be due and payable before the earlier of the issuance of any required permit or thirty days from the date of this approval. Three, planning board reserves for event to verify the actual water flow, to verify that conformance of projections as supplied by the applicant. Four, planning board takes note that the access drive to the applicant, applicant's parcel approaches on the southeast corner of the site, the applicant shall provide appropriate easement to the adjacent parcel for this, uh, for this access drive. This access easement shall be spent, the planning board is returning for review and approval before filing with the county or county clerk's office. This shall be a condition of approval, and accordingly, the easement shall be preconditioned to the issuance of any building permit or certificate of occupancy. Five, the applicant shall install a stop sign and or stop bar at the exits from the site onto the private access. Six, the rear of the property shall be screened with a number of trees and landscaping to protect the adjacent residential development, the total number of proposed trees may not be decreased. Next, the stockade fence will be switched to a chain link fence in all areas except the areas screening the adjacent residential properties.
And that is in the form of a motion?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Reseda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. All those who wish to abstain. Hearing no abstentions or negative votes, please mark the resolution approving the site plan with the conditions as unanimous.
I appreciate your thing, and thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations on staying in Sisroon.
Yeah, thank you.
What you gonna do with the old place?
Uh, there's been several offers already, uh, but we're actually technically keeping it and using it as an arts distribution warehouse, so.
Cool.
We'll see.
Glad you're staying and expanding.
Yes, thank you.
Next item on the site plan is, next item is site plan, Syracuse label and surround printing, two-hundred-stewart drive, proposed building expansion. CNS engineers will be representing the applicant, and this is another success story, we built that building not that long ago, and here you are, looking to expand it.
Yes, Mark, if you're the CNS student, yeah, great success story, actually. Gosh, in two years, we're thinking about another thirty-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty square feet, round numbers, uh, and add about thirty-two, uh, car additional parking spaces and two loading docks to the building, so it's, uh, it's growing, definitely.
And some new employees.
And it's looking, what, ten employees, I believe, so yeah, it's, it's going good. Just kinda wanted to present tonight, let, you know, inform the board that what we're looking at doing, uh, what Syracuse label's looking at doing, and, um, uh, trying to get any comments initially from this, uh, meeting today, just to see, uh, any questions, concerns that, uh, the board may have. They're just initially, on the engineering end of it, um, the, uh, first phase that we did, we had to do some, uh, runoff production volume work on the north end of the site, uh, we had that incorporated, the, actually, the runoff, runoff production volume calculated for the building expansion that we're seeing today, minus, actually, I'll pick that up, the expansion's a little bit bigger than what we calculated for the, uh, for the expansion side, I gotta modify that a little bit, that's gonna be part of, uh, the work that's gonna be required for the project, so we'll do it. Okay?
And you review all of that with, um, Mark?
That's definitely.
And did we discuss some, was there any opportunity to do any work in the existing, to make it the county's, what we already have built out there, make it any larger, or?
Well, the, the, um, existing water quantity, uh, up north of that, up by, by Taff Road, uh, that's already set to, uh, accommodate the development that's going on for this, so the way we were looking at this, we're looking at doing just the, the new, uh, storm water requirements immediately adjacent to the site that's, that we're on right now. It seems to make more sense that way, instead of trying to push that on to the, to the site up the north for right now.
Okay.
I had a nice amount of work right now.
Yeah, that was the, the, the goal, trying to minimize it and try not to add any more of what, so for any future expansion, we could have as much available as possible.
Correct.
And it was our, my understanding from discussions with the IDA, that, um, also that Syracuse label was acquiring or had rights to the building that's currently occupied by an engineering firm or environmental firm, but they have a lease that runs for two years more, but then you'll have control of that at the end of Caswell too. So at the end of the day, Syracuse label will control basically all of Caswell Avenue with the exception of Humpy House. Correct? Okay. Which is a good thing, because it makes it a little, our job a little easier if we understand those are the circumstances. The exterior of the building will be keeping with the current building?
Yeah, the, uh, the renderings that were submitted as part of it, yes, basically it'll match the existing building.
I'll pull those up, Mark.
As well as the, uh, the roof lines too as well.
What about signage?
Uh, the, the plan is, excuse me, not to add any signage, it would be more, well, back up, the sign that currently exists on the north end of the building would be taken down and put onto the new addition.
The new north side?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know how many members of the board had an opportunity to tour the facility when they did the grand opening, beautiful facility. It just is, I don't know if you made it up, Mark, but it's, it's a gorgeous facility. So there's no change in the signage other than you're relocating it just to the?
That's, that's correct.
Right.
And the additional parking, do we have any situations now where you're parking out on the streets, or are we able to accommodate everybody in the existing parking?
No, we just wanted to put additional on for additional employees.
Kathy, we, the clerk needs your name, just.
Oh, Kathy Limo. Kathy, K-A-T-I-M-O.
I think we, there got wrong with this, I thought the additional parking too was for, uh, when visitors come to, to give them more space to park as well too.
Well, you certainly would, the additional land have plenty of space, so.
And to your point, the, you know, any comments that come from tonight, next step would be to, uh, detailed design of the stormwater, um, requirements and all that as well too.
So, Mark, well, Mark generally gets those you've worked with.
Yes.
So.
We'll, we'll work through those.
We may have questions, but he'll write them down in his comments.
Sure.
When are you looking to start construction?
So we're hoping to have our design done by January, we wanna put it, uh, after the bid in February, and we'd like to start construction in March.
That certainly seems doable, what do you think, Mark?
I'm sure the site plan, if you, uh, think there are any.
Yeah, that gives us plenty of time. January's not that busy, so we should be able to.
You're studying January's meeting, right, that I had, I believe?
Um, yes.
Okay. For some factors, what others?
Um, the first meeting is, um, gonna be the seventh, and then the second meeting will be the third, Wednesday.
On Monday or Wednesday?
It's a Monday because, um, the, the town board's reorganization meeting is gonna be held on, uh, Thursday.
Third.
The third, so we would not.
It's in the morning.
It's in the morning, Mom.
It's at nine-thirty in the morning.
On Thursday.
Yeah.
We would normally have our meeting Wednesday, the second. So that's why we delayed it, and the ZBA has canceled all their meetings till March, so we'll do it on that Monday, and then we'll be back on Wednesday. So. It's fun getting this space, because we have court a couple nights, and the court doesn't like it if we come in or. It's the best we could work out.
The first meeting's the seventh, and the second one is the sixteenth?
That's our next item for discussion, but that's what we have this space reserved for. What happens on Monday night?
The national championship.
Oh.
I mean, Monday night, the same with the placement.
Well, maybe we can change the time, make it earlier. There you go, but that's the next item for discussion. Neil, do you have anything at the sketch plan point?
No.
Mark, obviously, do you see?
No, I, I took a brief look, yeah, there's, there's not a lot here, and then most of it's working on the details and stuff.
Coes, anything at sketch?
No.
Mr. Snyder?
Looks great.
Mr. Resedo?
It's good old stuff, thank you.
Mr. Abby?
Well, sir, the, the work of your extension.
The, the access drive off of Coswell, going to the, the proposed building? Is it going to the morning dock?
That, that does go to the lowering docks, yes.
So, and that's on the east side of the building?
That would be the east side, yeah, there's two, there's proposed two doors, two red doors.
So I think you got them backwards on the elevation?
Uh, boy, they were, whoops.
Did you see where it says west elevation, is the third one down?
Yes, you're right, that would be east elevation, I guess, yeah.
Was it that, how, what's that for?
Yeah, we've got east to west by first, yes.
I remembered the W P, I.
Mr. Gardner? As am I. But if you wait around for a minute, you can find out when the next meeting's gonna be, Mark. Thank you, really Kathy, I think we all congratulate you guys.
Oh, thank you.
It's, you've just been a great addition to our family. It's great to see people working and expanding.
We appreciate your support.
Next item on the agenda is to set the first planning board meeting of two thousand nineteen. Heidi and I and the town clerk have been able to work out to have this on Monday night because the ZBA has canceled the meetings, and everyone's hurt. I'm entirely open to doing it earlier in the, the evening to, um, that's up to the board, I don't mind, five-thirty or six o'clock, or something like that, but.
On the seventh?
Yeah, it's basically, the first thing is a reorganization meeting, and where we will set the rest of the year's schedule.
You're aware there's three Wednes, well, there's five Wednesdays in January?
Mm-hmm.
So if you were even having it on the sixteenth as your first week?
We, we have to get it done earlier, yeah, because of those circumstances, we, we've gotta get the reorganization done, so.
You're not here. So I just won't keep it, maybe as late as we can. I will be here.
Girl, listen to my comments. Well, if you question, we'll be here.
Mr. Abby, what do you think?
I'm, I'm flexible. I'm ready with the other. Anytime's convenient.
Did everybody make it, you're gonna be away seven?
Actually, I missed first two of them on vacation.
Uh, Mr. Snyder?
Oh.
Can you get here a little earlier on the seventh?
I'm sure.
Five-thirty?
Yes.
Neil, can I have a resolution to set the next and the first meeting of two thousand nineteen for January seventh at five-thirty?
Yes, we're gonna move the adoption of the resolution to set the next meeting of the town of Sisroon planning board to be held at the Sisroon Town Hall commencing in January seventh, two thousand nineteen, five-thirty P.M.
And that's in the form of a motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Abby. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. All those who wish to abstain. It is set, five-thirty, Neil.
I don't know, that would be so cool, man.
I, I do have a couple of comments. I would like to be able to sit up there, and also, I would.
Hi, how does, you'd like to be able to what?
Sit up there.
Sit, oh. Up there means we?
Up there with the gentleman.
Okay.
And, I would, it's a between, it doesn't matter, I'm not afraid either one of you, so. And also, I would appreciate the unapproval minutes with the rest of the board, because I have no intention of sharing it with anyone, but it helps me in my position, and so, those are the only two requests I have, other than that, I, uh, it's always a learning curve for me, and, um, you guys will appreciate that, I'll.
Well, thank you.
And you, Neil. And Mark, and Lisa, I really, guys.
Okay, well, thank you, and.
It's a tough job, it's a tough job.
There's a lot to learn, and we have a good bunch of people who gotta. There's a lot to learn, and we have a good bunch of people who dedicate a lot of time to, to it. Everyone, by the way, did get the announcement for this year's, um, federation training?
No.
To give some consideration? Will you ask Heidi to resend it to the board members, um, it comes up in March, and?
It's in March, like, 'cause I got it.
Yeah.
No, you have it pretty long.
Yeah. Yes, it has done fast year. Well, I have seconded the motion of Merry Christmas, Mark, right?
All right.
And, um, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some movements adjourned.
Motion by Mr. Carr.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Abby to adjourn, we are adjourned.
And Happy New Year.
And Happy New Year.